I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that the meeting was duly called, and that the notice of meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The time is six o'clock. If you join me in standing, Mrs. Bush is going to lead us in the invocation, and I'll lead us in the pledges.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to gather today to honor our substitutes and to have the opportunity to meet and make decisions that impact everyday lives of our students and staff. Thank you that they have entrusted us to do this, and I pray that you give us wisdom as we go forward, in your son's name. Amen.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor, mercy, and love of life. My pledge is allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush and Mr. Williams. Item 2A, Special District Recognition, Dr. Stockton.
Okay, at this time I want to introduce Dr. Chris Hines, our Deputy Superintendent, to introduce this item.
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. The Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees awards, Ambassador Awards, to recognize individuals for their positive contributions to campus life and to campus climate. And tonight, it is an honor to bring forth to you for your recognition as ambassadors, these award recipients who are, represent a group of individuals that play a vital role in the success of our schools. As you know, from, as, life goes on and any day and at any time, someone can be absent because they're sick, or they have a sick child, or things go on. And we have, when key personnel are out, we have our substitute teachers that come in and play a vital role. And they have a challenging end, but they also serve an essential function in the day-to-day operations of our campuses. And without them, without our substitute teachers, we would be limited in what we could do in serving our students' educational needs. And so tonight, we bring forward for you to recognize some outstanding substitute teachers from our campuses. And I know Mr. Kidd and Mr. Huber are going to come forward to help present these recognitions. And so when, when we call out your name, if you would, come forward to receive their recognition.
Yes, if I could say something, this is one of those nights, it's just exciting. I feel blessed and honored to be part of the Conroe Independent School District. I can't tell you how much we appreciate our substitute teachers. Believe it or not, there's almost approximately 2,000 substitute teachers in our district. And tonight, we recognize 15 of those that are part of our team. And I can't tell you, just being blessed to have kids raised in the, in the, in the district, you know, how it feels when they come home. And we had a substitute teacher today, and she was great, or he was great. You know, you guys just are part of the team, and you're, like, we said, vital to the district, vital to be called at any time. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate all of the substitute teachers, but especially these 15, who are not just, you know, every day or so, but are part of the schools on a, just a consistent basis. And you make, make everybody's job so much easier because as far as instruction goes, you keep that continuity, and that is so important for so many different reasons for our students, and we are extremely thankful, and it's our privilege to honor you tonight.
Well, I've honestly never been one that's afraid of a mic, so I'll take the opportunity to say thank you as well. Big time part of the team, you know? It is a substitute teacher, but it certainly is a part of a team. I know that when the principals get the calls and the notices that so-and-so is going to be missing, I'm sure that they have that first panic attack, but then they realize that they've got some people that they can count on, and that's you guys. And we really appreciate you stepping up for whatever reason. I'm sure if we allow the principals to give the reasons why they have substitute teachers, we'd be here for the rest of the night. But we're not going to do that, so. Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
All right, so when we, when we call your name, if you would, come forward, and we'll have a little plaque for you. And then, also want to recognize the principals that are here tonight. So many of our principals were able to make it, and so we appreciate that. First, from Austin Elementary, is Kimberly Weatherson, and the principal there is Dr. Serena Pearson. Well, hey! (applause) All right, next is Jean Leaga, from Burnham Woods Elementary School, Dr. Christine Butler, principal. I know Dr. Butler too. Next up, we have Debbie Harbin, from Broadway Elementary School, Principal Nikki Conley. Next, we have Ani Hunley, from Geesinger Elementary School, Becky Page, principal. From Hawk Academic Alternative High School, Beth Ringwald, Paula Nicolini, principal. From Kaufman Elementary School, Penny Ward, Tina Oliver, principal. From Mitchell Intermediate School, is Terry Parkenem, Paula Kopecky, principal. Next is Monte Myers, from Oak Ridge High School, Tommy Johnson, principal. Next is Sonia Ostrander, from San Jacinto Elementary School, Renee O'Neal, principal. From Travis Intermediate School, Quentin Haynes, Tamika Taylor, principal. From the Woodlands College Park High School, Mary Hoskins, Principal Dr. Mark Merle. From the Woodlands High School 9th Grade Campus, Mitchell Alton Wicker, Dr. Chris Povich, From Washington Junior High School, Richard Matlock, Mr. Hartwell Brown, principal. And finally, from Wilkinson Elementary School, Carol Castillo, Victor Uer, principal. President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, each of these individuals is an ambassador for the district by demonstrating an unwavering commitment to the children, the parents, and the staff members of Conroe Independent School District, and we thank them.
I'll tell you what, if, if we could, if we could ask y'all to squeeze in, and we'll get a picture, okay? And then, if you would, we'd like to shake all your hands, if you don't mind making a spin around there.
Can you get a picture? You just stood in just one place, my friend?
I guess we, I guess we need to stand.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Wood. Again, thank you. And, and you don't have to walk down that line, ma'am, my bless your heart. It's, it's, it's an honor. We appreciate each other, and thank you for all of you.
Good to see you, appreciate you. Good to see you. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Appreciate you. Great job, appreciate having you, man. Thank you for everything. Thank you, man, thank you for all of you.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate everything.
I liked the way you all used to do it.
I was laughing in the picture when you kicked that thing out across.
So, so if I ruin the picture, if I ruin the picture.
Thank you again.
Thank you again, my friend.
Appreciate all you did.
Thanks again, brother.
Keep it up, man.
Good to see you.
Thank you, man, appreciate you.
Appreciate your passion, man, we appreciate it.
It's my most memorable time for myself.
I think we drove those, those boats crazy.
Appreciate it.
I didn't see.
Good time, man, you switch your.
That's good, looks.
Item 2B, citizen participation. Ms. Ferris, has anyone registered to address the board? Very good. The next 30 minutes has been designated for public participation by patrons who have signed up to address the board in accordance with Board Policy BED. Please remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. The board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level and prompt an equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. These policies provided, provided that if a resolution cannot be reached administratively, a person may appeal the administrative decision to the board, properly posted agenda item. Copies of the district complaint policies can be found on the district's website. Those of you who have registered to address the board will be limited to five minutes for their presentation. Delegations of five or more must appoint one representative to prevent, present their views to the board. Mrs. Ferris, please call the first person who's signed up to address the board, please.
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the school board, Dr. Stockton. For those who don't know me, my name's Mark McCloy. I am president of TSTA Conroe, members, members organization, teachers organization. I, I come here, I know about the complaint policy, I come here just to voice the, my, my members' concerns. I also go through Dr. Gibson and Dr. Knoll, which I gotta give a shout out to them, they helped tremendously with addressing concerns on a Senate Bill 2033, on no grades less than a 50. And they were very helpful in that. And I gotta give them props, because they were very attentive. I sent the email, they sent me right back, so kudos to those guys. Our concerns is paperwork, adding, adding requirements without taking anything away. Currently, teachers are made to do agendas, and then do what we call teacs, and then elts, and write it on the board, explain it to the kids, and then we go to ediforia, put it in there. That's a redundant system. Most of my, my members are feeling a little overwhelmed. We don't mind doing a little extra work, as long as you take something away. You know, give us, tell us do something, just take a little bit away, and, and that's what they, they're asking for. The next thing is redundant paperwork, lesson plans being put in, in several different places. Kilbore and vocabulary levels being, being asked to give when state, state requires just a minimum lesson plan. Let's see. That's about it that I have here, except for, I was, today was another school choice mentioned today at the state level. And we know, TSTA Conroe knows, as well as y'all, that school choice means school vouchers. And we, we are very concerned, because money away from our public school, our public education, is money away from our kids. And we just ask for y'all to please keep an eye on that, and, you know, join us if you have to, to make sure that comes out in a positive way. That's all I have, thank you very much for your time.
Mark, before you sit down, if, would you have specific examples of redundancies? If you'll get that to Dr. Hines, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, if, if, if nobody objects, I'd like to move Items 9, A, B, and C forward at this time. Dr. Stockton, 9A. So move, uh, we're good? Naming the principal of Cox Intermediate School.
Okay, as you've heard me say before, the most important thing that I do is recommend principals to you for your consideration for approval. The principals lead the schools, work with our wonderful teachers, and, and influence our students on a daily basis. So I take this very seriously, and tonight, I'm going to make three recommendations that I feel very good about. The first one is at Cox Intermediate School, and I'd like to recommend Debbie Spoon, who's currently an assistant principal there at Cox. In fact, opened the building up along with Dr., with Mr. Sharples several years ago.
Mr. President, I assume I have approval? Second. Any discussion? Not all those who favor signify by raising your right hand, all opposed like sign, and it passes unanimously, congratulations.
President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, thank you for this opportunity. As Dr. Stockton said, I opened, helped Mr. Sharples open up the building with a team of teachers several years ago, so continuing at that school as principal is very exciting. I actually started my journey at CISD as a student. I am a product of CISD and the first graduating class of McCullough High School, so I'm very proud of that. I also started in CISD as a paraprofessional, so being named a principal is very surreal. Thank you for that. I, I have some members of my family here today that I would like to introduce to you. I have my husband, Jeff Spoon, my son, Carson Spoon, and my daughter, Keely Spoon. They're the two, my two youngest children of seven. Thank you. I also would like to take the opportunity to thank a couple of people, because I did not get here all by myself. I, I want to thank all the teachers, the parents, and the children, the students at Tom Cox Intermediate for their support and encouragement over the last couple of weeks. I also want to thank Mr. Sharples for taking a chance on me and hiring me as an assistant principal and encouraging me along the way. And I also would like to thank Shelley Winkler, who I worked with as an assistant principal at Vogel Intermediate, and has taught me that the most important thing is building relationships with students and parents and our staff. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Dr. Stockton, Item 9D, naming of the principal for Armstrong Elementary School.
Okay, at this time, I want to recommend to you Patricia Thacker. Patricia's currently the interim principal at Armstrong, and has served in that position during the school year.
Good. So move? Have a motion, do I hear a second? Second. Motion is second, any discussion? All those favors signify by raising your right hand, all those opposed like sign. Congratulations, Ms. Thacker.
President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, thank you so much for recommending me to become the next principal at Armstrong Elementary. I'm extremely excited and honored for this opportunity. I also want to thank Dr. Gibson and Ms. Winkler for supporting and believing in me as interim principal this year. Armstrong has held a place in my heart these last five years, and I'm excited to continue with, to working with the students, the parents, the community, and the staff at Armstrong. I want to introduce you to my family who's here, and without them, none of this would be possible. My mom, my husband, Justin Thacker, my daughter, Phoebe, and my son, Cash, so. And then I also want to, to thank my staff who's here to support, because they're a wonderful staff, so thank you again for this opportunity.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations. Good luck. Dr. Stockton, Item 9C, naming of the principal at Ford Elementary School.
At this time, I'd like to recommend Paola Gorman to be the next principal of Ford Elementary School. She's currently an assistant principal at Ford.
And do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Yeah, a second, all those, any discussion? Well... Okay, like I said, any important discussion from, from, any, no. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, all opposed like sign. Congratulations. Gorman.
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. I want to thank you for this opportunity. It's a privilege to be here tonight, and I'm very humble and honored to be named the principal of Ford Elementary. Ford Elementary is my home, and that's where my heart and my soul is. I, I want to thank my family who is here, my husband, Brian Gorman, my son, Grant Gorman, my son, Michael Gorman. I also have my parents, my siblings, my father and mother-in-law present. I would like to thank my Ford family, because through all the changes, they have been very supportive, and they're always working, they're always doing, you know, their best at what they do, and I, I feel blessed to serve that community and that school. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations.
He deserves it.
Congratulations. Good job. Stockton, it's, it strikes me how blessed we are at the talent we have in this room, and, and beyond this room, that is, but I know, I know you're very pleased tonight. Item 3, consent agenda, has anybody wished to take any item off to consider individually? If not, I would consider a motion. Motion approved, accept? Second? Second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, all opposed like sign. Item 4A, 2015-16 calendar approval, Dr. Stockton.
At this time, I'll ask Dr. Hines to come back to the podium and introduce the recommended
President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, the 2015-2016 draft calendars, we had A and B, and they were both posted on the CISD website. They went up about late November, and they remained up and through, up through late January for review and comments. The district-level planning and decision-making committee studied the comments and suggestions received from the staff, parents, community, and they respectfully recommend tonight for your approval, Draft Calendar A as the 2015-2016 school calendar. The calendar reflects just a few things, I'll point out, one is the first day of school is August 24th. Of course, we can't start any earlier than that, and that's, that's just a requirement. We also, the calendar has 178 days of instruction, 79 days fall in the first semester, 99 in the second semester, which is the same as this year. In fact, this calendar pretty much is a version of this year's calendar with next year's dates. The last day of school would be June the 2nd. There is one week of holiday for Thanksgiving, that's November the 23rd through the 27th. There would be a two-week winter break, that's December 21st through January 4th. The first semester would end at the winter break. Spring break would be the week of March 14 through 18. There's two early release days, and there's two inclement weather days on the calendar. We ask for your approval.
Mr. President, I assume I have approval? I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Having a second, any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, all opposed like sign. Motion passed.
Thank you, Dr. Hines.
Item 5A, Administration Approval of 2015 District Facilities Planning Committee, Dr. Stockton.
From 2003 to 2013, CISD has gained approximately 16,000 students. To meet the needs related to this growth, the community passed two bond referendums, one in 2004 and one in 2008. From these two referendums, 14 new schools were built, along with numerous major additions. Additionally, CISD has built an elementary school and completed several other major additions out of fund balance. CISD continues to experience heavy growth, and today's enrollment of 56,450 is approximately 1,500 students more than this time last year. With growth in mind, in August of 2014, the Board of Trustees approved the agreement to hire a population and survey analyst, a PASA, to complete a demographic study for CISD. That study has been recently completed and is now on the district website. I will caution you, though, before you hit print, it's about 380 pages long. The study indicates that our heavy growth pattern will continue The study indicates that our heavy growth pattern will continue with expected growth of between 1,400 and 1,700 students per year for the next five years and increasing even greater after that. Tonight, I'm asking the board to approve the 2015 facility planning committee for the purpose of, one, reviewing the district's projected growth and instructional needs for the next three to five years, and, two, making a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to address those needs while impacting the tax rate as minimally as possible. If approved, the committee will meet beginning in March with the goal of bringing a recommendation to the Board of Trustees in June in anticipation of a November bond referendum. The facility planning committee is comprised of citizens representing various geographic areas in C I S D and, and I do notice that at least one of our committee, recommended committee members is in the audience, Mr. Joe Michaels. And at this time, I seek your approval. You have the list before you. The list is also on the overhead.
Oh, motion approved.
A second.
And a second? Any, any discussion? I mean, Joe's out there. Anybody want to pick a shot? I, I say that tongue-in-cheek Joe, uh, i- in discussion, I would just say thank you for many years. You've served, uh, this district and this community, uh, with a passion and we thank you, sir. It's good to see you. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And the motion passes. And thank you again for serving Joe and thank Dr. Stockton.
Thank you.
Item five D, select project delivery method for new construction projects, girls locker room renovations at the Woodlands High School, track and tennis court lifecycle renovations, new high school and Oak Ridge feeder zone. Dr. Stockton?
Easy Foster, please.
President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, it's my pleasure tonight to bring forward a request to approve a construction delivery method, which is a contracting method by which we procure construction within the district. Um, we recommend this morning, uh, that we select or approve the construction manager at risk delivery method for the following new construction projects. A new high school in the Oak Ridge feeder zone, the Woodlands High School girls locker rooms renovations, and track and tennis court lifecycle renovations. The district recommends this delivery method because we've used it successfully for, for many years. We feel like it is the, the way that we get the best value, the best bang for our dollar for these construction projects. At this point, the district believes, uh, this delivery method to be the, the way that we can keep track of our rising construction costs in the current market, uh, and plan for projects as we move forward in the future. Once this delivery method has been determined by the board, uh, the district, uh, my department will prepare a request for qualifications for two-step processes related to selection of the C M at risk. Step one being a request for qualifications where the contractors turn in their qualifications, bonding information, insurance information, and essentially a resume that describes their ability to procure the work or the prosecute the work that we're, we're asking them to do. Uh, step two would be, uh, selecting a shortlist, uh, depending on how many respondents we get to this request for qualifications, interviewing those and s- taking their pricing, uh, as part of step two. The pricing would be for fee percentage and general conditions percentage based on the budgets established in these RFQs. We anticipate, uh, returning to the board with contractor selections for these projects, uh, in April, at the April board meeting, so that we can aggressively work with, uh, these selected contractors to bring GMPs for those projects in for work. Um, this process is only to approve the delivery method. I want to make that clear. This is just our, you approving our ability to go out and, and press, and select contractors to work with. At this time, I'd like to ask for your approval.
A motion? Do I hear a second? And any discussion?
I just have a question. I just want to make sure. We've, we've done the project delivery method before in this district several times, as I understand it, right?
Absolutely. As long as it's been a, a, a legislatively legal way for us to procure work, that it has been our preferred method.
So, so is this something we have to approve each year? I'm trying to understand, what's the length of our approval, that kind of thing?
Well, currently...
Or if we've done it in the past, why, why does it need to come back?
Well, currently, we're working, uh, within the district review how we've procured work over the years. Uh, the last time we brought a, a selection request like this was prior to the 2008 bond elections. And we selected C M at risk for a package of work and, uh, those bond funds are nearing their end.
Okay.
And that work has been done or is in progress of being done. So now we're looking forward to work that is either funded outside of that bond, outside those selections, or, uh, looking forward, you'll see the new high school, which is looking forward to the next bond. We're starting early on that so that we can be on top of it.
So presently, then, this project delivery method is just for these projects that have been outlined here?
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you. And you will come back to us, assuming we, it's a bond, assuming we, you know, approve a bond for, for a certain number of projects, you'll come back to us for those other projects for, for us, for a delivery method to those?
Yes, sir.
Other than these, which will be a part of it?
That is correct.
These, we just need to get a head start on these.
That is what we're asking for.
Very good. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Uh, item five C, approve, uh, a 133 construction agreement and guaranteed maximum price.
Dr. Stockton, Mr. E., Foster?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Foster again.
Again, at this point, uh, it's very, very similar. This is for an actual project, but this is coming from, uh, contractor selections that were made as part of the 2008 bond referendum. The, uh, we're asking you to approve a guaranteed maximum price amendment for the Mitchell Intermediate Lifecycle Roof Project and, uh, the, the title doesn't encapsulate the entire work. What we're doing is updating as a matter of life cycle, all the waterproofing, the roof, uh, the membranes, the coatings, the, the window seals, things of that nature related to Mitchell Intermediate. At this point, uh, bring for, uh, bring forward for your approval, uh, the guaranteeing maximum price, uh, it's a contract and an amendment. Uh, the amendment being the guaranteed maximum price for Brookstone to be our C M at risk to, uh, uh, pursue this work. As I described, Mitchell Intermediate, this is a lifecycle roof project, uh, and, uh, part of this is to delegate, uh, Dr. Stockton's ability to, uh, sign the, sign the contract or execute contract documents and bring forward. Brookstone has been selected as C M at risk because they've prosecuted work like this before. You've recalled their last project with us was the, uh, lifecycle replacement of the bricks and masonry at Travis. So they are 100% capable of, of a complex and a well orchestrated project. The district, uh, has already, uh, advertised, uh, received bids for this work at Brookstone's office. Uh, we've been through a, a lengthy study process and, uh, feel confident recommending for you this project with a guaranteed maximum price tonight. It's important to note, I mean, just as a matter of housekeeping, uh, by approving this project, we are approving them as the C M at risk, uh, or we're approving the delivery method as C M at risk. We're approving Brookstone as the C M at risk and we're approving the guaranteed maximum price with Brookstone to do this work. At this time, I'd like to ask for your approval.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, a question?
How old is the roof?
Uh, the roof on Mitchell, uh, for a majority, well, all the roofs are their original roofs. Mitchell has had one addition, uh, in its life, uh, but we are replacing the entire roofing system. So when we're done with this project, the entire roof will be on the same life cycle. Uh, so, but the original roof was built in 1991, I believe. So it is 24 years old at this point.
And what's the typical life?
Our, our typical life cycle is 20 years.
So we're doing better. That's great.
What type of roof is it?
The, uh, the roof that we're proposing in this guaranteed maximum price is a two-ply mod bit roof with a white cap sheet, which is, uh, from, from recommendations from our design, designer P B K and, and our other design teams would be what would be, uh, if you want to coin it, be the gold standard for roofing in the district. So it's a complete tear-off and a complete replacement with a, uh, with a modified bitumen system.
Now, if it was built in 1991, that is an older style roof that's on there.
Absolutely.
And therefore, right now, if we put this two ply on there, we can come back 20 years from now, put the third ply on there and get another extended life out of it, maybe 20 or so?
Yes, sir. I mean, and...
But you can't do that with the roof you've got on there.
Uh, the roof we have on it is a gravel ballasted roof. It's a, it's a, basically a tar built-up roof. Um, so in order to do anything to it, you have to remove all or as much of all of the gravel you can. Uh, one of the other benefits of doing a complete tear-off and put-back is we're also increasing the R-value. Uh, if you can imagine, the energy code at the time it was built is not the energy code we're measured by today. So we're able to increase the R-value of that roof, uh, commensurate with the energy codes of today.
Simply because it's white versus dark?
No, it's, it's additional, uh, roof insulation. And, and then we put a white cap on top of it to increase the reflectivity.
Any other question?
How well do those, have we, have those roofs proven, been proven in the district?
We have...
Do we have any other schools with them?
We have a number of different roof types in the district. Uh, I would say three-quarters of them are mod bit, two-ply mod bit roofs. Uh, over time, they've graduated from black to gray to white as far as the top color. But we have a number of them in the district and they overall perform very well.
I'm sure I should probably know this, but what is the maximum price amendment?
It's the guaranteed maximum price amendment.
Yeah, what's, what is the price?
Uh, I, unfortunately, I gave all three of those documents to Ms. Galatas. Otherwise, I'd read them...
My computers know that.
Yeah. Couple dollars, huh?
And I apologize if I never remember writing down myself.
Got some change? I got your checkbook. We used to have books that were about this thick and we could flip to that page, but we're so technologically inclined these days. Does anybody need to hear that before we move on? Fine if you do.
Yes, as well.
Okay? Bill will wait. Dan's got the money. Dan knew, Dan knew how much it was right off.
Thank you, Dan. Our, the guaranteed maximum price for this contract is $1,315,297.
Okay. Any further questions or discussions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And then item passes. Uh, item five D, capital improvements update, Mr. Foster. Up, Dr. Stockton, Mr. Foster, both.
Again, I, I, at this time, I, I would like to show you and give you an update for the capital improvements we do have under construction within the district. Uh, starting with the Oak Ridge High School ninth grade campus, uh, this project, I'm proud to report it has showed some progress. Uh, we had some sunshine over the last month since the last board meeting. So you can see the front entry, the, the new curb appeal for that, that building coming together in this picture. Uh, as well, the interior of the, of the program. You remember, uh, board meeting, uh, two ago, we approved the purchase of the furniture for this, uh, for this space. So, uh, the admin and conference furniture is, is in progress, so it will be delivered in the not-too-distant future. Uh, what you're looking at now is the exterior of the, uh, classroom wing, which has the, uh, the typical classrooms and the art labs and the culinary lab. The inside of this pro, uh, building is, is also coming together. Uh, what I have not showed you are pictures of the, uh, science wing because it's, it's essentially in the same shape as the classroom wing, wing is from this side. The interior walls are coming together, the interior systems, the plumbing, the air conditioning, that, things of that nature are going in as we speak. This project is on schedule. It is scheduled to turn over 100%, so all the classrooms, uh, ready for use at the end of the summer. Oak Ridge Elementary is a project we approved at the last board meeting, so it is just now, just now in the mobilizing stages. If you've driven by there in the recent past, you've seen the work going on to expand the parking in the front of the school. Uh, you've also, uh, what you can't see from the street are where we're adding the additional space to house the, the more efficient and larger mechanical systems that are going in. You're looking at the excavation for the foundations for one of the mechanical rooms. Uh, we're building two at that campus. This is the area where the second mechanical room will be, will be constructed, so you can see the barrier protection. Uh, interestingly enough, the contractor and the principal have worked together so that the inside of that wall is being decorated by the students. So it's not, uh, it's a, an art project for the, for the kids there. And that is the update for the work we have in progress.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foster.
Can I comment real quick?
Absolutely.
I, I've been at both the Oak Ridge ninth campus and Oak Ridge Elementary campus recently and y'all are doing a phenomenal job and it was really awesome to see.
Appreciate that. I'll pass that on to our contractors.
Thank you very much. Item six A, financial reports, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Rice, will you come provide those reports, please?
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. I'm here tonight to present the financial statements for the district for the month of January. These statements will include the general fund, debt service, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. The first statement we're going to look at this evening is the balance sheet for the month. The balance sheet includes the assets, liabilities, and fund balances for the district. If you look under the asset section, cash and investments, uh, currently $287 million. Look at the detail of that. You can see the majority of our funds in the general fund are invested. We have $1.2 million of bank deposits, $140 million in our pools, close to $100 million in our Capital One Now account. And our longer-term, uh, investments, majority of them are treasury notes of about $46.5 million in there. This is the timing of the year that we like to start tracking our tax collections. They're, they're starting to roll in and we compare to where we were last year to make sure that we're on track. And as you can see, we're slightly above where we were in previous year, so, so we feel good about that. The next statement is our income statement for the month. The income statement is our revenues and expenditures for the district. The revenues, uh, consist of local and intermediate sources, state program revenues and federal program revenues. If we look at the largest, uh, area, which is local and intermediate, we can see the detail on that. And as you can see in the general fund and debt service, the majority of the revenues come from taxes. Uh, in food service, that's from food sales and then self-funded insurance is from premium contributions. We can also look at our total expenditures. We have that broken down in the functional areas for you, for each of the funds. Self-funded insurance, uh, for the year, we've had total revenues of $14.6 million, total expenses of $15 million for revenues under expenses of, of $420,000. If we look at the first two months, we were minus $750,000 right out of the gate, but we had rollover, uh, rollout from the previous plan. So now our new plan's in place and we're going to continue to watch that and see, uh, see how that progresses with the new, with the new plan structure. Our wellness centers, uh, participation has been good. Uh, through January, we've had 2,424 at the Oak Ridge Center. We've had 929 visitors to the Conroe Center for a total of 3,353. We're averaging about 671 a month at our, at our center. So, so good, good participation. Our investments for the month. We ended, uh, December with 300 and roughly $47 million invested at the end of December. January, $419 million. The increase, like I said, taxes are starting to roll in. The wham of the pools in the Capital One is one day and those are yielding about 16 basis points. Our longer-term investments, our treasury notes, uh, the wham is 657 days, yielding a little over 65 basis points. The wham of our total, uh, complete portfolio is 72 days, yielding a little over 21 basis points. And of course, our 90-day T-bill, which is our benchmark, is just 1.3 basis points. So, it's almost zero there. And I promised fireworks last time.
Mr. Rice, any questions?
Appreciate you, sir. Need for executive session tonight. Uh, item 10 A, except for review, Tasby Local District, uh, Update 101 and revisions to local policies, C V and E I F.
Doctor Stockton? Mrs. Galatas, please.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. Mr. Husbands, you all have received the marked-up local policies in your packet and vantage points explaining the changes. Just one thing I want to point out, those, those documents do a really good job of explaining. This isn't a earth-shattering update at all, but there are, uh, we are recommending changes to C V and that would kind of change the answer to a question that you asked earlier, Mr. Husbands. We're recommending that construction manager at risk be our preferred method, uh, method for construction delivery, um, that will keep us from having to come back to the board and ask that you select that each time, which speeds up the process. If our planning and construction department would like to suggest another method to you, then that would come back to the board for your approval.
So that would be the exception?
Correct. Any other delivery method would be the exception to that. And so we're, we're recommending that change in C V and I think it'll streamline the process a little bit more to become person. Anybody have any other questions on any other policy, local policies?
Do we need to approve this?
No, administration's looking at the recommended changes and updating procedures. And so when we come back in March, I'll ask for adoption of these.
Well, thank, thank you for...
Well, thank you for your explanation, if anybody has any questions.
I don't have any questions at this time. I just actually just received this yesterday, so I may come back with some questions later on, but up to time.
Great. Okay. Item 10B, consider land purchasing Oak Ridge.
Mrs. Galatas, please.
Did you know we've been working on procuring a piece of property in the Oak Ridge Fuchsia Peterson? We are very pleased that we've reached a contract and present that fee for approval to CD.
Mr. President, I move approval of the contract as presented.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. And item 10C, level three grievance hearing, Mr. Holt.
At this time, I will serve as the presiding officer. At this meeting, the Conroe and Pennant School District Board of Trustees is convened on February 17, 2015. The corpsman of the board is present, including the following members: Melanie Bush, Scott Kidd, Ray Sanders, John Husbands, Atrin Williams, and Skeeter Hubert. The purpose of this item on the board's agenda is to hear the complaint and appeal of former employee Kim Holt in accordance with local board policy DGBA. Ms. Holt's complaint relates to her termination from employment. Therefore, under the Texas Government Code, Section 551.004, this meeting will be held in closed session because the hearing involves a complaint relating to the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public employee. At this time, this meeting of the Conroe and Pennant School District Board of Trustees is adjourned into executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act. Everyone not associated with the hearing should leave the room. The board will take no action while in executive session. The time is now 6:50.